Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning at our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Ruth, could you please call the room?
Yes, sir. Adamson?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Gina?
Here.
Laura?
Johnston?
Here.
Blad?
Here. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda number two is the Airport Commission update. Representatives from the Airport Commission will discuss the commission's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. Good morning.
Good morning. All right, I'll start with reading the mission statement. It's to be a significant economic engine.
If you'll just so the people at home know who you are.
I'm sorry. Forgot about that introduction. I'm Michelle Paletti. I'm the board chair.
David Allen, Airport Manager.
Thank you.
Okay. To be a significant economic engine and vital source for transportation services for southeastern Idaho through the development of air service, general aviation and non-aviation land development. The airport continues to strengthen its position as a regional asset that in 2009 generated $39 million in annual economic impact as measured in a 2010 state study. Sorry, nervous, nerves. The new study in 2019 should show a substantial increase as it will include Peterson, Driscoll, Topay, and the impacts of the recent growth in passenger traffic. The focus again this year is going to be on air service and land use. The air service development ended in 2017 with the second consecutive record-breaking year of 78,610 revenue passengers, which is a 17 percent increase over 2016 and a 64 percent increase over 2015. The fourth daily flight began just last week on March 2nd, which increases the capacity at another 35 percent. January and February already are up 22 percent over 2017, and the next step is to seek direct service to another location, which could be Denver most likely, which must protect the existing service which is very valued to the city and the region. On the land use, the Driscoll-Topay lease that was signed, over a million dollars have been invested, is over a million dollar investment, which they are in a city-owned building. The new hangar lease, which is a 60 by 70 foot size, is an additional inquiry, and they're breaking ground on that next month. The new facility lease will be the ITC Services, which is the Idaho.
Tarp Corporation.
Okay. For the hay tarping, isn't it for Topay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On operations staffing, there has been a request pending for a lead operations specialist, which is much needed, and that we ask for you to please consider this request. The current staffing level makes coverage difficult, which pulls maintenance personnel away from their regular duties, which greatly disrupts the schedule when a vacation or FMLA is requested and incur significant overtime hours.
I would just like to add where we think we're going to be in five years. We were talking about air service and land development, which we always do, and with the air service, I do see that we're going to have not only these four flights to Salt Lake, but we are going to have a service to Denver. Most likely with SkyWest because they are a wonderful partner. I think they're going to find a way to make that work with us as a United Express carrier. So I could see in five years, two flights a day to Denver, even though it would be tough to start that route because they're talking about one flight a day in the midday, but we can work that out and figure out a way to make that work. In land development, with aviation development, we're getting numerous inquiries now for hangars. There's been more people moving in that have aircraft or are bringing aircraft into the region. I'm not sure if that's just because of the FBI or other things that are happening along with that, but we are finally getting inquiries for hangar development. That's much needed. We also see eventually a breakthrough in the impasse, if you will, with the FAA on development of the non-aeronautical land, the industrial business part. And we should see, once that starts, I think that will just snowball into a wonderful development.
So what are the strategies being explored for hangar development?
What are the strategies?
Yeah.
There really haven't been any. We haven't been pushing aviation development, general aviation development, because we haven't been able to, it's not an aviation community, at least not right now. It's been very hard, and we need the FBO to be involved in that, and so far they've been reluctant also to do anything. So we've been both talking about
An FBO is, I don't remember.
Fixed Base Operator, which is, for us, is the AV Center.
Okay. And, because there's always been a waiting list for hangars, hasn't there?
There has been a waiting list, yes.
Okay, so that shows you that there's a need greater than what we're fulfilling. I knew a person at one time that was interested in perhaps working out an agreement with the city. He says he's not in this community, but he thought maybe he could build them and get a certain time life on them, and then they revert to the city. Has that been explored with anyone else?
As far as getting somebody else to invest in that, we have talked to a couple people. They've never actually gotten serious about it. The city, it would not be a good investment for the city, so I'm not prepared to do that. One person now has expressed interest about a month ago, and I reached out to him earlier this week, and he has not called back. But there is somebody right now that is making inquiries about that.
Are rates for our hangars comparable to what other locales charge?
Yes, we compare with the other airports in the region, or at least every other year, and sometimes every year.
Okay, so there's not room for more profit if somebody would build, say, 15 hangars out there?
For the city.
Could they charge, they build them, they lease them themselves for a certain amount of time, and then they revert to the city? Private partner.
If there is some, nobody's been interested in doing that, and so I'm assuming it didn't pencil out. It certainly doesn't pencil out for me when I did it. The hangars that we did have were quite expensive when I tallied up what the cost was, and I wouldn't use that type of hangar anyway. It's too big. We could do something smaller, but even when we tried to explore that, it just wasn't something we were interested in. Eventually, if the demand's there enough, somebody's going to build.
It just looks to me like what's happened in some of the other airports. We've got room to expand where some of them don't, and it's just as fast to get to Jackson pretty much from here, going the other, Highway 34, or other parts, as it is from other locales. So it'd seem like there'd be a market that would increase as this whole region develops, because they don't necessarily have the hangars they want to use in some of the distant airports. You know, like Alpine, or someplace like that.
Mr. Mayor, and Dave, and Michelle, I'm really pleased with the effort that has generated the increased passenger participation at our airport. What do you think made the difference in terms of getting that additional flight?
I think the ball started rolling when we got all jet service.
Okay.
I really think that had an impact on a lot of people. Their perception of air service was jets. They either felt like the turboprop was uncomfortable, or they were actually afraid of it, in some cases. So that was a big thing that started the ball rolling, and actually contributed to the success of the three flights when we went back down and asked for that third flight. As far as getting the success of obtaining this fourth flight, the primary reason might have been the advertising and networking that was done. We did some substantial networking, as you were a part of, for the Chamber Airport Committee, with the local businesses, and we marketed not only here but up in the northern areas, because our fares are averaging now about $345 less than the fares out of Idaho Falls. So we marketed that up to even Rexburg. And I think, based on my license plate checks that I do periodically, we're gaining traffic from those areas. We're going to do another demand study in 2019. We're budgeting for it. You'll see that come up, and that should show us what the change has been since the last one, which was 16, 2015, I think was when we did the last demand study. So we're definitely due for it.
Thank you. Those are nice observations. I had not thought about the aircraft being a difference, but makes sense.
Yeah.
Good. Any other questions?
The fourth flight usage, Dave. Is there any numbers yet on how full that fourth flight has been so far?
SkyWest said it was not performing as well as they wanted it to as far as the advanced bookings, but that's not really a big thing yet. When I did the first week unofficially, which includes six days of the additional flight, we were up 34 percent over last year, and our load factor, which was the key that they're looking for, overall was 75 percent. That's not bad. I mean, we're trying to hit 80, but to start at 75 and build back up is not a bad start in my mind.
Does that include the fourth flight seats?
That first seven days of March included six days of the extra flight, yes. March 1st was the only day that they did not have that yet. So based on that, I'm feeling comfortable that we're going to be able to do this. We are marketing up north, just to make sure that we can attract them, because that 3 o'clock, for a leisure traveler especially, is a good time. You know, they're not trying to compete with the business people for that 7:00 AM flight.
If we get a flight to Denver, is that going to cut into the usage from here in Salt Lake City, the connecting flights down there?
It would have to cut in somewhat, but we don't, we don't think it'll be enough to really impact the frequency that we have and the numbers that would be filling that at the time. Denver is our number one destination for our catchment area, and yet we only capture 4 percent of that market. And even at 4 percent, it's our number three destination of all destinations that we fly to. Most people, you know, it's our third highest destination. So we think that we can get market that would want to go to Denver and beyond and not impact the Delta connection flights.
As you look.
At least not enough.
As you look at other flights, what's the demand for, say, Boise, Seattle?
I love that idea. I really do. And nobody likes it. Nobody will even talk to me about that idea.
Really?
No. And it really makes perfect sense in my mind, because to get to Boise, our traffic is not going to drive to Idaho Falls. You know, they tried that one with the, I don't remember what, the Pilates aircraft.
Allegiance or something.
And nobody's going to drive for an hour, get there two hours early, and then fly for an hour, and spend four hours flying to Boise. If they were, they could fly down to Salt Lake and then connect that way. But if we offered that service, and then offered it through to Seattle, their market wouldn't use us. Our market would use us. We could get the market for both Boise and Seattle traffic from both markets and beyond, because even from Boise, you can catch to San Diego, or Sacramento, or I think it's Oakland, San Jose, places like that. And in Seattle, you can go anywhere with Alaska Airlines. So it's not good for going to the East Coast, but obviously it would serve the West quite well.
But you can't get an air carrier to talk about that?
No. Well, the likely air carriers are not interested, the ones that would really fit that. It's not, it doesn't fit with their model, which is the hub and spoke.
What's the overall condition of facilities at the airport?
We've done a lot, we've deferred a lot of meetings, to be honest with you. With the budgets that we've worked with, we've had to forego some maintenance. The terminal building, in my estimation, is still quite well, because we did a complete rehab of that in 2010. But even that's showing where the carpet on the steps, we've noticed, and at the restroom entrances, and so we're already looking at, five years from now, we're going to have to start figuring out how to get carpeting in there. The other facilities, some of them are in really poor condition, like the warehouses and the hangars that were World War II hangars. Those, they're World War II hangars. They're, I don't know what else I can say about that. Now, I've been talking to AV Center, and they want to invest some money in one of the hangars, and we've done this before with, well, Driscoll-Topay was a prime example, where they invested a lot of money in our facilities, and then we gave them rent abatement for the part that I would have had to do anyway to put anybody in that facility, such as the office compliance things, the fire sprinkler suppression system. So we partnered with them, but they spent easily $1.2 million total. I saw their receipts. And we're putting out less than $200,000 of that. So that's the kind of partnership that'll help us be able to do this. I think that the ITC Services, they're responsible for the maintenance. They agreed to do that. We had to give them a fairly good deal to make that happen, because it is, again, it's an older building. But those are the kind of arrangements we've been able to do, at least with the leased facilities, to make that work. Again, the terminal is good, the shop building is good, the fire station, which is ours, we have some work that we've got in our capital plan to do. So overall, the facilities that we actually operate out of, I think, are pretty good. The facilities we lease to others, eh, well, we work with them on that.
Are there additional facilities that aren't leased?
I'm sorry?
Are there additional buildings that aren't being used?
That are not being used? Oh, I don't think so. No, now that ITC Services moved into that one, that was our only other one that hasn't been leased out. And Civil Air Patrol is using a building that was previously occupied by the FAA. So no, no, everything's occupied.
Good. How's our relationship with the rental car businesses? Are we meeting the demand of the public with what we have there?
I want to say yes. I haven't explored that in depth, to be honest with you, but I haven't heard complaints either. The car rentals are doing well. I have a recommendation for the next bidding, where we can offer dual IDs at each booth, so that somebody can be Enterprise and something else, and Avis can be Avis and Budget, and then we can have up to six different entities out there if we want. I think that could work, and I think that's what's desired by everybody. But as far as the, how we're doing with them, I would have to assume it is doing good. Our numbers are starting to turn back up. They haven't increased, along with the passenger traffic, as much as we hoped. But then, that's actually logical, because the focus of our marketing has been local traffic. They're not renting the car. The incoming traffic is what rents the car, and we don't have that number increasing yet. But I expect with the FBI, with Northgate, all these developments, that we're going to get inbound traffic that will probably be looking for car rentals.
In terms of our five-year projections, if there are repairs and things, will they be in your budget or anticipated for this year and future years?
With good weather, I'll say yes. When we have a good year, like we're having this year, we expect to have some excess reserves. And we actually have excess reserves for the 2019 budget that you were briefed on earlier this week, or last week. And we will use those for those capital projects. In fact, we're already looking at what we need to do. Some of them are big projects, like the, there's still one section of roof on the terminal that I need to get in the soffit underneath that carport. The carport roof is the one that needs repair, and we won't do the soffit until we get the roof, obviously. There's some small stuff. I need a small mower. That's $2,500, but I want to be able to put that in there, because even though it's not a big capital project, if I can get that now, it really will help with, because the equipment we're using is a 96 with a backup of a 92. Which, again, I'll credit our maintenance staff. These guys can cobble anything together and make it last forever. First, they take great care of it in the first place, so it lasts well beyond its useful life. But even when it starts to break down, they've got skills for welding, they've got skills for all the other type of work that they need to keep that equipment running. They've got a major mower, and that's one of the things we will put in for as a capital project. It's about $32,000, $35,000, I think. That we need to do the grass, or the fields out by the runway in the safety areas, we have to keep that done. And the piece of equipment they're using now, I think it's from the 80s. Don't quote me on that, but I think it's.
Any other questions? Well, Dave, this will be your last report to the city council, I believe, won't it?
It is.
Unless you're going to extend for a year.
Somebody said they wanted to come see if I was going to do that or not. It's not really what happened. I'm pretty well committed to.
Well, you are committed to going where you're going. There's no doubt about it. It should be a good time out on that water and that toothpick that you're going to be in. Should be fun, so.
You'll be fine, yeah.
Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you very much. Thank you for all that you do, and thanks for what you've done for us. Dave, you have, you've turned around the airport, I think, and you've increased passengers like crazy. And it's neat to be able to talk about in the next five years, seeing two more flights, maybe going to Denver. And so, great job. Great, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Agenda Item Three is the Child Care Advisory Committee update. Representatives from the Child Care Advisory Committee will discuss the committee's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations.
Good morning, members of city council and Mayor Blad. My name is Janee Perman. I am the Licensing Enforcement Officer for the Pocatello Police Department and the Staff Liaison for the Child Care Advisory Committee. I would like to introduce Laura Thomas, who is a, excuse me, Quality Child Care Consultant with Idaho Stars, and our chairperson, Cory Lewis, who is the owner of The Lighthouse Preschool and Child Care. I would like to thank everyone for giving us the opportunity today to share our purpose. I want to start out by saying how valuable the Child Care Committee is when it comes to gathering information pertaining to child care, solidifying that information, and passing it along to our child care facilities here in the city of Pocatello. Our goal as a committee is to make recommendations regarding potential revisions to the city of Pocatello Child Care Code, review the available training classes in the area, and recommendations of courses which can be used to satisfy, excuse me, satisfy staff training and certification requirements set forth in the Child Care Code. The committee has been instrumental in making child care centers in the Pocatello area safer for children. The goal for this coming year is to propose amendments to the Child Care Code in an effort to make it a more stringent, or excuse me, make it as stringent as the guidelines set forth by the Idaho Child Care Program. The committee has done a great job this past year in reinstituting and organizing the quarterly training hosted by the Child Care Advisory Board. The committee has received a lot of positive feedback from the child care community regarding the benefits of that training. Lastly, I would like to commend the city council members who have supported the Pocatello Police Department's decisions in deniling, or excuse me, upholding the denials for certain applicants.
Members of the city council, I'm Mayor Blad. My name is Cory Lewis, and I'm the Chair for the Child Care Advisory Board Committee and have been a part of the committee for the past three years. I believe the committee serves a much-needed purpose in our community. I can speak from experience, as I'm an owner of a child care center in Pocatello. I rely on information that comes through the committee to keep me and my center up to date on changes made concerning all aspects of child care. For example, the current changes to the Safe Sleep practices put into effect by ICCP, which is the Idaho Child Care Program. The advisory board put on a Safe Sleep training last month for the providers in the area to help them understand why Safe Sleep is important in preventing infant death, as well as preparing them for the rule changes that will be taking place with ICCP in July. We're working to provide at least three free trainings per year that will cover information that is important and relevant to child care. Prior to the Safe Sleep training, we had an active shooter training to help providers with emergency planning for their centers. We're also working to get providers connected with committee members to help with issues they may have concerning licensing, health department codes, as well as fire codes. We're sending out newsletters once a month, which highlight community resources, activities for children, as well as health and safety notes each month.
Good morning, city council members and Mayor Brian Blad. My name is Laura, and I do work with the Idaho Stars program, which works directly with child care providers. And I have provided you a handout today, just to give you an overview of how many providers and children we have here in the community that the advisory board is trying to work with. We have 38 licensed facility, and in those licensed facilities, we have about 1,600 children enrolled. My program has something called the Professional Development System, and we have 180 staff providers working in child care on that Professional Development System. And with that Professional Development System, they can receive scholarships for trainings and incentives for doing those trainings. And why I'm telling you that is because one of the things in the code is that child care providers do have to receive training each year, and it is something that we provide and assist them with, so that it really, it doesn't have to be a barrier for them. They can receive money to get those trainings and incentives after they get those trainings. And as you can see, we gave out 263 training scholarships in Pocatello, and 151 child care providers, teachers and directors, received incentives, cash incentives, for getting those trainings. And those cash incentives are generally around $150 to $200 each. We have four providers that are getting academic scholarships through ISU this year as well. One thing that Cory did touch on was the Child Development Block Grant, which assists families in Pocatello with Idaho, with the Idaho Child Care Program, which is also called ICCP, and it continues to add requirements for providers. In 2017, they added required trainings, but because we do have our own licensing here in Pocatello, and we were already asking providers to get 12 hours of training, that just rolled right over, and they were already doing that, so it was very easy for our providers here to follow that federal requirement. They also need to have completed emergency plans now. That started in 2017. And then in 2018, one of the things that the Child Development Block Grant is requiring is safe sleep, safe sleep practices for all our child care providers, and enhanced background checks. And as Janee was talking, as much as we can, we want for our code to follow those requirements as well. And so that'll be something she'll be talking about more in the advisory committee will be talking about more this year, too. I do want to tell about how we have had offered trainings for child care providers. So if you look under trainings, these are actually in Bannock County. We offered 969 trainings. We had 2,449 attendees, and we had 708 unique attendees here in Bannock County. Another thing I do want to tell you about is our providers here in Pocatello have really shown a lot of interest, especially, we've had three join this last year, in the Steps to Quality Program. And what that is, is a voluntary program that Idaho Stars has, where they invite us into their program, basically, to assess them and help them improve quality. They invite us into their classrooms. The teachers can make action plans on what they want to improve. We have child care consultants and health consultants that work individually with the teachers and the directors in all these six areas: health and safety, staffing and professional development, child growth development and learning, children with diverse abilities, strengthening families and communities, and leadership and management. And as you can see, these are the facilities on the left that are participating voluntary in our Steps to Quality Program, and we also have one other of our larger centers here in Pocatello that sent in an interest form this last week to join.
Laura, may I ask you a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Laura, describe for me how the Idaho Stars program really works. I mean, it's a state program. Who administers it on the state level, or is it private? Who administers it on the state level, or is it private?
I'm an employee of the University of Idaho, although the money does come from a grant from the Department of Health and Welfare.
Oh, okay. So the university administers the program?
Yes.
And how many Idaho Stars centers would there be?
It's actually a joint program also with AEYC, which is the Association for the Education of Young Children.
Really? Never heard of it. Okay. Thank you.
You talk about training. What kind of training are you offering?
So, these are some of the trainings, including the ones that the Pocatello Advisory Committee has also been a part of offering. So, for example, they offered one on Safe Sleep recently, sorry, we offered one on Safe Sleep recently, and then they just are a wide range. Nutrition, getting out in the community and reaching your families and having resources for your families that are in need, developing curriculum in the childcare facilities, better ways to retain staff, just a whole variety of what you might encounter in childcare. And a lot of those are based on what the childcare facility wants. Maybe they're having challenging behaviors, and they want a class on how to deal with that.
Is there a, is there a requirement for a number of adults per child, or?
Yes, we do have ratios in Pocatello.
Usually, I mean, usually it's 12 to 1. There's a point system, so there are certain requirements. You can only have so many kids per adult.
Okay. Janee, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Maybe this is a platform for you to preach, but in the Idaho State Journal this last week, there was a shocking article about a childcare provider that broke the legs of a child.
Yes.
Can you talk to us about the importance of licensing, so, because that was an unlicensed daycare provider?
I heard briefly, you know, I read briefly about that incident. Thankfully, it wasn't here in the state of Idaho. However, I mean, that's a perfect example of why we have this childcare code in place to begin with. We want to make sure that the employees at the facilities, or even in-home providers, I mean, they have a background check. They, you know, when we do the background checks, we go back a certain number of years to make sure that there's nothing that could potentially harm these children. It's also why we put in place trainings to, you know, better help employees deal with behaviors of, you know, kids and what have you, I mean, ways to deal with it, et cetera. So, I mean, it's, I think it's very important to have these so-called, you know, childcare programs, the city code in place, because we want to protect the children. And obviously, we can't always do that, but it's definitely beneficial and a reason, you know, that we have it here. And I think that the city of Pocatello has done an amazing job, even before I've gotten on board, as far as being one of the leading cities as far as the code is concerned.
Would you describe for our consuming audience the procedures that you go through to license a daycare facility?
The facilities? There is quite, I mean, I wouldn't say it's overwhelming, but there's a number of things you'd have to do in order to open up a facility here in the city of Pocatello. You have to make sure that you have your, one of the biggest things that I think that people encounter as far as being difficult is making sure your facility or your home is up to code. Now, you have to be up to city code. For example, something like having a fence in place is required. Having shade is required if you're out in the heat, et cetera. You also have to have a backyard or someplace outdoors where the children can play if they're there more than four hours a day. So, I mean, there's certain things that you have to do. You also have to make sure that your house is up to international fire code, which means there has to be two direct exits, you know, et cetera. There has to be smoke alarms, I mean, certain things. So, I mean, as far as opening up a facility, there is a number of things you've got to make sure that it's covered before you do so. Providers have to have CPR and AED pediatric training before they do that, before they actually can be licensed. Employees, they don't, it's not as stringent, because we rely on the providers to, you know, pass along the information as far as, you know, what needs to be done, et cetera. Employees to have to, everybody who's involved has to have a background check if they're going to be around the children. That includes something like, if you have an in-home facility, the people that reside in that, or that residence that are over the age of 13, well, 13 and over, have to have a background check as well. So, I mean, there are certain things that you'd have to get started, as I would assume in any business, but I wouldn't call it overwhelming. It's just making sure that the kids are safe.
Thank you.
Who inspects the home?
Who inspects the home? So what we have is we have Jason Ellis, our fire inspector, who goes out and inspects the home. We also have the health department that has to have certain things in mind to inspect the home, and they have to do it on a yearly basis. Now, I go randomly, and I go and inspect the home, I would say, two or three times a year, depending on the facility. So there is, there is three of us typically that are doing inspections, but, you know, Laura comes in occasionally if they ask for help to, you know, give them assistance and et cetera. So they have a number of people to go to if they need help.
Idaho Stars is not regulatory?
No.
Any other questions?
Of the 1,600 people enroll, or kids enrolled in, how many are probably not enrolled in a licensed facility? Do you have any estimate?
Those are all licensed, the 1,600 there. That would not be-
We know 1,600 are in licensed facilities. How many underground facilities do we have?
I would love to know.
Right, don't I? You know, unless, unless I'm notified of somebody providing childcare without a license, it's really hard, it's really hard to say. I mean, I see a lot of things on social media about, you know, people offering childcare without a license, and most of the time, they're just not aware that they need one. So it's hard to say how many underground facilities we have. I mean, you know, occasionally, I would say, maybe three or four times a year, I get complaints or I receive anonymous complaints about facilities that are providing childcare without a license, that usually I find out that they don't, they aren't aware that they need one. But other than that, I don't have any sort of, I don't have any number to give you. You know, it could be a quite large number that we're not aware of.
But only the licensed facilities receive the capacity to get reimbursement from state, right?
That is correct, yes.
What triggers licensing?
Triggers licensing? If you're watching child, or a child that's not your own or of any family members for more than 15 hours a week, and that can, that could be one child. I mean, there's obviously a bit more to it, but that is generally the guideline.
That's not your own? What if it's a relative?
If it's a relative, that's not applicable.
Okay.
But, I mean, if you're watching your neighbor's kid more than 15 hours a week, let's say, you are required to be licensed.
Okay. Any other questions? Super. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it.
We will move now to agenda item number four, Fire Department Master Plan, ESCI. Fire department staff will present concepts for creation of a master plan to meet current and future needs of the department. Staff is seeking council's guidance to designate Emergency Services Consulting International ESCI as a sole source vendor to analyze and develop the development of a fire department master plan. The development of a master plan will provide needed guidance to ensure that the department is best positioned to meet future demands, including those anticipated by the North Gate annexation. Can you put more in there on that?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. David Gates, Fire Chief. I'm gonna start with saying, I actually was at a meeting yesterday, and one of my counterparts to the, close north of us, actually was lamenting on how often people were coming down from Idaho Falls to fly out of our airport, and I had to chuckle. So I just want to share that on the heels of this particularly agenda item right previous. I also wanted to echo my pride in our department and just put it on record that the American Red Cross is recognizing Pocatello Fire Department today at noon for the real heroes for their efforts on the Safe Haven Fire, as well as they're recognizing Jake Leidy, who is a firefighter who saved a referee's life at a local basketball event recently because of his fast action and his willingness to take CPR. So I'm very proud of our department, and I think we do some exceptional stuff. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here for the master plan. As I suggested, yes, this is a master plan, and I apologize for the mouthful. You know, we've experienced significant growth in responses the last 10 years. We really don't anticipate that closing down at all, and we really anticipate with the North Gate project that that's gonna add a level of complexity to our future that we're just not prepared to analyze and deal with. You know, master planning is basically a where are we now, a very detailed analysis of where we are now, where do we need to be, where are gap analysis, if you will, and how do we get there? What are some strategies that we could employ? I'm just gonna briefly go through my executive summary and then answer questions. When I say comprehensive analysis, this is incredibly comprehensive analysis from the ability to take GIS data and spin it and turn it and look at our response times, where our calls are, where our risks are, and all of that kind of analysis, and really say where would we want to put fire stations, where should fire stations be considered in the future, how many resources do we need, deployment models, and all that type of stuff. So, on levels above what we have the capability, and often requires very specialized software to spin and turn the GIS data to make a look at this and give a good analysis. I can tell you that Chief Hanneman at North uses a software program that's called DECKN to do that, and it's $150,000, just to do the analysis to identify where a fire station would go.
Where's where she at?
What's that? Idaho Falls. You know, I think that our goal is to provide the most effective and efficient service, and I think that in doing that, it's important, and as we've talked about the North Gate, to be able to really make sure that, you know, putting this fire station in the right location is so important for our coverage, our ISO rating, and things such as that. And so we really want to make sure that we're picking the right places and we're thinking long-term. I do think it's important to have an independent third party. Well, I feel like I'm fairly connected. I'm the Idaho Fire Chief's president. I work with, around the state, with fire chiefs throughout the state. I don't have the expertise that this company has. They've done over 2,000 master plans and experienced nationwide and internationally fire departments and service delivery. So when you, when you have that level of knowledge, you can kind of say, oh, I've seen this, and I think this would work very well for your department. And so I think that that's a very important part. Obviously, that industry expertise is huge, and I really think that ultimately, having that independent third party can garner broad support, both from you as the council, the community, fire department staff, as well as the union, to kind of rally around going forward. The base cost of the project is $42,900. Sounds pretty expensive, but as I told you, just the software to do just some of the data analysis is $150,000. My proposal is that this would be split into cost share with the county, so a two-thirds, one-third. The city share for the base would be about 28/6. They do have a bunch of options, and I'm not gonna read through those options. If I were to select all options, it's roughly $54,000. My desire would be to use some of the city's capital reserve funds to fund our portion of this particular project, much as the police department did last year for their, their master plan. I kind of went into the Emergency Services Consulting background, over 2,000 fire departments' reports that they've done. They've done quite a few in Idaho. I'm not gonna list them all, but they're in your packet of all the fire departments in Idaho. So they have Idaho expertise, too, so that, you know, they understand our jurisdictions. My research has found no other entity that has a, the focus on emergency services that ESCI has. I just, I found others that'll do master planning, but often they're doing city master planning. And so it's really, you know, the fire department is kind of an ancillary, and their focus is emergency services. My recommendation would be to select as the options, the hazmat service, because we do provide hazmat. I also think that looking at our communications, which is in effect the dispatch center, I would select that option. The hazmat one would be borne by the fire department alone, so as we do the cost share, the EMS, the Bannock County EMS, really would not be picking up the hazmat portion of that. They're picking up a third of the base plan. Then the communications, which is kind of an analysis of our dispatch center and our communications, which I think is that focal point of getting the right resource, and is critical. We've been doing things to try and improve that, but it's good to have somebody who has other experience to take a look at that organization. That one is 1,500. That would be shared between Bannock County and Pocatello. The technical rescue, we provide technical rescue as a community. That, again, would be solo for the fire department or the city to fund that one, because that is not an EMS-related discipline. And then the last one is the cost projections, basically kind of putting to paper what the future costs of this. So we have a, have really a mechanism to know how much this is gonna cost, and that would be shared two-thirds, one-third between the two. The total project price with those options would be $48,965, and the cost share would split out $33,644 to the, to the city. Now, I have not presented this to the county yet. This was my starting point, so clearly, based on your guidance, will depend on which way to go with the county, but I can't do both at once, so. This project is framed in the concept that they will support moving forward if you give guidance. And with that, I have one more kudos. We also got an email recently from Lynn Perkins, Amy's Kitchen manager, and she was very happy with our response when they had their fire in their HVAC system. So, got them up and running as quickly as we possibly could, so. With that, I'd stand for questions.
As I was looking through some of the references for the other departments that have used ESCI, is that the right acronym?
Yeah. Emergency Services Consulting International. I believe, I've actually flip-flopped it, my dyslexia every once in a while.
So, you've kind of talked about the need for maybe wanting to get this master plan so we can plan for the future with growth, and maybe if we need to have a new fire station, those kinds of things. As I looked through and I noticed what they did in Nampa, they, there was a mention of some implementation, they gave a recommendation with implementation of alternative, or alternate response units. Would that be something that we're possible to look at? Because I know you're kind of exploring that as well.
No, in our conversation, so he'll come out and talk to us, look at what we're deploying to, and then, you know, my guidance to him is I want to know the most efficient way to deploy our resources to cover the call volumes that we have now as also predictive into the future. And so, absolutely, alternative response units would be part of the conversation and included in this process.
So those are just the kind of things that they would come up with and give you, you wouldn't have to have them outlined in the-
Correct.
-call points that you gave us before, okay?
Well, that's part of the solutions, that when they come up with a recommendations of where, how to get there, that component of how to get there, that is part of that, is what kind of things can you do to deploy differently in order to meet the standards?
Have you looked at any of the department plans that ESCI has, ESCI has developed?
I have. I've looked at Lewiston's. I'm good friends with Chief Michael Bust in Lewiston, and he actually had a master plan done, and I've looked at his. They've given us, they actually came out to our conference a couple of years ago and last year, and presented the things that they do, and I'm very satisfied with the way they, they lay out their plans. And Chief Michael Bust has been very happy with the plan that they, they created for them, and has been using that as they move forward in their, in their growth and their development.
They indicated it would take about 120 days after the field work to get a report back. Any idea how long the field work takes?
It's pretty comprehensive. He didn't give me the exact timeframe. He said that they probably wouldn't even be able to start until probably June, even if we got authorization fairly quickly. So June is before he has any openings available to commit staff to that. Just to frame this, they literally will go out and they will, they will talk to Chubbick, they will talk to all of our surrounding agencies, they will get input from them, kind of an understanding of how, what our cooperative level is. So it's a pretty comprehensive thing. They look at our policies, our SAGs, our SOPs, our response guidelines. They look at our infrastructure, our station currently as it is. So it's, it's pretty detailed. And then when you think about the capturing all the data, and they look at the data both for trends, as well as what it is statically. So, I don't have a good idea, but I know it's a pretty comprehensive report, but you can weigh it.
Do they talk to the union?
What's that?
Do they talk to the union?
Oh, they talk to the union, absolutely. Yep, that's part of it.
Sometime back, I had an insurance agent talk to me about, and I'll talk to you about this, about our fire rating being a precarious three, which could drop to a four or beyond if we don't have a comprehensive plan. Does this plan take into effect, take into consideration how to- Does this plan take into effect, take into consideration how to manage to maintain a three or perhaps get closer to a two? Is there anything like that?
So the plan will generally look at national standards and best practices of what's happening in the industry and guide us towards that. And I think that if we're moving in that direction, it's not going to look per se at the ISO specifics, the ISO analysis, but we have an understanding of what things are measured. For example, water distribution is measured. As a city, we get high credits for our water distribution system. Dispatch is measured. We get pretty high credits for our dispatch system. Those things, probably the things that we get dinged on the most is staffing, apparatus, apparatus placement, whether you have a tower truck, whether it's staffed all the time, that's when we don't have, our ladder, having the ladder that we have has helped us. But if we build in a North Gate and if our, if the structures in North Gate are above a certain height, then we may end up in a situation where we would need to deploy a ladder truck into that jurisdiction in order to maintain our ISO. It's a, it's very, training hours, there's a lot of things that go into it, so.
Well, this person was concerned because people were calling about increases in their insurance and different things, and there are people that own facilities here versus Idaho Falls. Idaho Falls recently dropped to a two, which made greater disparity in terms of what people are paying out of pocket for their coverage in their homes and other facilities.
A very rough, rough rule of thumb is 10% in insurance between a four, three, and a two for each step.
He boiled it down to about $35 a level, that if you drop from a three to a four, it costs you $34, $35 more on an average house in Pocatello, because I think he found data that said the average home in Pocatello was $139,000.
Okay.
He did pretty comprehensive analysis, but it was, you know, it was not a true analysis, but it was a snapshot.
Well, just for a frame of reference, the insurance companies, there's two things that have been in the winds. A lot of insurance companies are going toward experience-based versus whether, what your ISO rating is. So some are going to be in the experience-based camp, some of them are going to be in the more ISO rate-based camp. So it's not dollar-for-dollar, you know, it's not, it is not an easy analysis, nor do insurance companies generally provide you that ready data. And most of the studies that I've seen have been literally somebody having to call insurance provider X up and say, hey, what would it be if I were this? And then calling another one up and what would it be if I were this? And that's hard to gravitate towards as a true study, as you say. But an insurance agent would have that knowledge way more than I would, and they don't normally share it. If I call them up and say, tell me what rates are.
He had done a lot of the data analysis in other areas, but it seems to me, and his real concern was not what the North Gate expansion is, but what it might do to people throughout our community, the more strung out our fire department gets.
Well, I would assure you that I, my, I'm confident that if we were to expand North Gate out and develop it without any action, I'm confident that we will drop to a four. I don't think, that is just too much expansion, too many additional homes, not enough response time into that area, that I'm very confident that we would not make, because we are, as you say, a tenuous three. We're maybe a quarter of the way, you know, a 3.25, so we're not a strong three. If I were a 3.75, I would say, yeah, we're on the other end of this and we probably have some room to wiggle, but I don't see that this is going, you know, we're going to have to take action.
Chief Gates, what participation do you have with the planning on the North Gate? Are you participating with Jeff and Tom and others?
We have not been involved. Nobody has come to me. I think that this was kind of a new thing. We've talked about it at executive staff meeting a couple of times, but at no point have I been reached out to and said, hey, we need to talk to you about where we're going to put a fire station. I've heard rumors, but honestly, it's not that it's, it just hasn't been, you know, front and center at this point, other than it's out there.
It would seem to me that with the higher load for ambulance calls than fire departments, that the two-thirds, one-third split ought to be the other way.
Well, if you do the analysis of actual resource time utilization, the ambulance call duration is much shorter than most of the fire call duration. So a fire truck going out on a fire call is going to be out for four to six hours, and the ambulance call is out for about 30 minutes. And so when you look at that, and we've looked at this, everything from, we've ratioed employees, we've ratioed the calls in terms of the amount of time spent, and that's just where it is. You know, we currently utilize that same model in terms of staff payment. My salary is paid one-third by the county, and so it's just been, that's kind of been, I implemented that several years ago, and we've tried to use that model. We do assess that on a regular basis to try and see if we're out of whack in any other mechanism, but if you look at budgets, you look at people, you look at response, time on response, all those seem to kind of belie the two-thirds, one-third.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I really think that we've got to do something in this area, whether this is the most desired way to go, but it looks to me like we've really got to do some planning. I'm in favor of our moving forward or something.
Okay.
I had another question for you. You mentioned that you'd talked to one department about their results after having this consultant and that they were happy with it. Is it just the one that you've talked to?
No, I've talked to several, but they're not all, Lewiston was the one that was a master plan.
Okay.
I talked to Meridian, Chief Niemeyer is a good friend of mine, I've talked to him. They did more of a regional plan concept. They were looking at, you know, more of a consolidation type of thing, and so they brought ESCI in to do a focus on what can we do consolidation-wise? They were happy with their output as well. They didn't end up doing that for political reasons, but, you know, they were happy with the output.
Okay. Well, that was what I was going to ask, is if, if most of these departments had actually implemented the findings that they came up with, or if it was like a lot of, you just need to build all these new stations and remodel all of your stuff, and then realistically you don't have to do it?
Can't be that.
You know what I mean? Like, were they happy with actionable items?
I think that that's what, it gave them things that they could hang their head on. It gave the council things that they could feel confident is, these are, these are actions. Now, whether we implement it in a five-year tract or a 10-year tract, that's, you know, I think that that's, you know, we're going to, as a community, have to evaluate that, and that's why I would like the cost projections to be included in that study. So we, we can really look at that and say, okay, well, what is this and how, if, we need to understand the true ramifications so that we can make good decisions, and...
You mentioned the Idaho Falls chief has a software package that does something similar to this?
Yeah, it's a very expensive one, and I can't borrow it.
Well, I'm under it. Does it give him any detail that you're going to be missing?
I don't think so. I think that that's their program. What his package allows him to do is in real time continually reevaluate. I'll give you an example. They just built a fire station, cost them $5 million, and they had an area where they thought it should be, and when they were able to run the analysis with the software, it was, it said, well, you're within a block of where it should be, but you're a block off. So again, as a policymaker, well, I have the property here that we'll probably put it a block off. You know, this would have been ideal, but we don't have property there. So that was kind of the, it allows them to do that analysis. It's very detailed. It's hard to even define when you look at the way they analyze. They look at how many times would a unit not be available? How many times do you have multiple units out? How many times multiple fire units? How many times multiple EMS units? That's the type of analysis it is. It's very complex, and it requires pretty healthy software package to evaluate.
Okay, any other questions for the chief?
Mayor, I just, I mean, my, my goal would be to go ahead and get approval to move forward with this as proposed to a council meeting, and I'm just looking for guidance for that.
Would you do better clarification?
We will, yeah, we typically will talk about it at our clarification and have you do that, but it looks like everybody's been nodding their head that it's, that they're in favor of doing something.
We'll plan for moving forward, but we can tell it here otherwise.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, then, we'll move on to agenda item number five is communications tower on city property. Todd Delquist will discuss, or with Digital Skylines, representing Verizon Wireless, will be present to discuss the possibility of entering into an agreement for placement of a 50-foot self-supported communications tower and a small equipment structure on city property. Planning and development services and water department staff will be in attendance to answer council's questions and seek direction from the council regarding the placement of such structures on city property.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. My name is Todd Dost. I'm with Digital Skylines, here on behalf of Verizon Wireless. For the past several years, my client has invested significantly in the city of Pocatello and the surrounding areas to increase network coverage and connectivity. We value the city as a partner, and most recently, it entered into a lease agreement for a similar type of facility at your airport. And in my discussions with Dave, it sounds like they're happy at least with the fact that they've received their rent check. So we're proud to partner with the city for the development of the site at that location. Over the past several months, I've been working with your Public Works and your planning department on location concepts and design concepts for proposed facilities designed to address capacity and coverage issues near Interstate 15 and Center Street. The location of the city water tank facility is important to my client because it offers natural elevation, which provides great line of sight to address the coverage deficiency that they're currently experiencing. It certainly negates the need to build a much taller structure, as the structure that's currently proposed is right at 50 feet. And that is the height, as you can see, that is required to see over the water tank, because wireless technology relies heavily on line of sight to the user equipment. To be clear, this presentation really focuses on a potential landlord-tenant relationship. It might touch on land use issues and design issues. As far as you as a landlord would want to see certain changes or certain location or design aspects that might make the site more palatable to you. This is really designed to address the leasing proposal or the leasing component and not so much the land use. The site is proposed, it's a 25-foot by 30-foot compound. As you can see, it's proposed to be enclosed with block to help screen the equipment, and the site can be improved with either a 50-foot, what's called a monopine, or kind of more of a bare-bones structure in a monopole. The structure will support a minimum of 12 8-foot Verizon Wireless antennas and associated equipment behind the antennas, most particularly remote radio heads, which provide the most recent technology for their LTE network. Inside the compound, it is improved with equipment cabinets and a standby generator that will provide reliable service 24/7 for the site. The electronics are contained within equipment cabinets and enclosures. One is typically a power cabinet. Most all the power going into the site is converted into DC power and stored in batteries, and that's actually what powers the radios. And the second component holds, the second cabinet, rather, holds the RF component, and there's a third cabinet that is proposed for future use. The generator is a double-wall, underbelly diesel generator that, as I mentioned, will provide a continuous service for the cell site. In terms of compensation, the lease is structured as a five-year initial term with five five-year renewal terms. Initial proposed rent is $10,000 a year, which would increase 2% annually throughout the term of the lease. I know, working with Dave at the airport, we were able to make adjustments to those terms to help him with some budget issues. I believe he had earmarked some of that money to be used for the roof, and we were able to structure the payment, at least for the initial term as an upfront payment to help him with some of the maintenance that he had at the airport. He was also a really good negotiator, was able to actually negotiate a higher escalator for the airports. So it ended up being, from my discussions with him, a pretty good deal for him in addition to the value-add of providing state-of-the-art connectivity on the Verizon Wireless network to visitors at the airport. So we certainly hope that this would do the same in providing some additional capacity and network coverage to a pretty busy area of town. That's it for my proposal and the overview of the site and some of the lease terms. Because we've already entered into an agreement at the airport, I believe we could use that agreement at least as a starting point and not have to go through all the legalese and drafting a new agreement for this location. I'd like to reserve the rest of the time to answer any questions that you might have so I can catch my flight at 12:26 at your airport. Thank you for flying.
Questions, council? What's the potential RF output of this system?
So I believe this is proposed as an LTE and an AWS site in addition to their incumbent 850. So most of the radio heads and tools seem out of the tower, provide an output of 60 watts for...
Piece?
Pardon me?
Each?
Yes.
So 720 total?
Yes. It may vary depending on the technology. I know that now AWS are higher, the higher frequency will require a little higher output. For example, some of the AWS or 2100 megahertz frequencies are using 90-watt radio heads. It's because it doesn't propagate as far and doesn't penetrate the built environment as well.
How much is that tank going to shield?
The tank shouldn't shield it at all. Really, the site is designed to see over the tank, so we shouldn't see really any measurable interference or what we call PIM or passive intermodulation from the site. So that's, propose the site the minimum height to be able to see over that water tank and not have interference issues.
Are you considering putting it on which side of the tank?
The site would go on the northwest corner of the compound facility, and we've moved that from what was originally proposed to stay out of the way of the mural on the tank. We certainly want this to not be an eyesore. We don't want to obstruct that mural or otherwise negatively impact the surrounding environment.
How often does it need to be serviced?
Typically serviced once a month at night. They're a lot like bankers. They're going to go and work on the site when it's not in high use. So you'll see them, the typical maintenance window for a cell site is between 11 at night and 4 in the morning. And it's really just periodic maintenance. They'll change out cards and what's called the basement unit. In some instances, they may need to bring a lift out to replace remote radio heads or replace a failing antenna.
Diesel fuel tank storage?
Yes.
How much?
It is 260 gallons. And while they would certainly like to, you know, to have a generator for backup, it's not critical. They can increase battery capacity in the power cabinet. They can give them increased response time. Something that, there is a commercial power failure, they can install additional batteries to buy them some more time before they can hopefully restore power or in certain instances be able to pull a, pull a temporary generator out to the site to keep it in service.
You indicated the ability to add one additional carrier to this site down the road possibly.
Mayor and council mayor, that is correct. The tower would be structurally designed to accommodate at least one additional carrier. It really helps to do that at the outset as opposed to coming in and doing costly structural modifications after the fact.
Would the RF output of that additional carrier be comparable to yours?
It would. The site would be designed for a comparable carrier, a T-Mobile, a Sprint, or an AT&amp;T with comparable equipment loading. We'd also add in additional loading just as a safety factor.
Any other questions?
Isn't the rate that you're negotiating with us is similar to what you negotiate with other private places?
It is. I've done some other transactions with some folks in American Falls, and these are for macro cell sites, and it is comparable to the rates you see for those types of facilities.
Because I know of a place that, it's a church, and they rented their bell tower, and they got $33,000 a year.
So when the structure's already there, you can afford to spend a little bit more operating expense because you're not spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on installing a pole. So it really comes down to the math work between capital expense outlaid and operating expense you're paying for the setup.
Do you have a question?
No, I was just going to say I'm good with it. No, I was just going to say I'm good with it.
I don't, council, I don't think we would, I don't think a tree up there would look good personally. You want to make something stand out, put a tree up on it?
I've seen one of those, and it stands out more than a regular tower.
Yeah, well, in the middle of trees, they're okay, but...
In my personal opinion, it really doesn't fool anybody.
Not at all.
Sure not in the wintertime when the leaves fall.
Right. But again, from a, from a landlord perspective, thorough design considerations that the city would like to see factored into the site, we should be willing to work with the city to do that.
I think we ought to hear from whoever owns the land below it a little bit, because they may want to develop that land. It's been before us, but not, I don't think it's been platted, except that it had been looked at at one time. And I think whoever owns that land below it ought to have a little input into this, so...
Certainly. Assuming at least from a preliminary basis, you're okay with the proposal, the next steps that, that I would take to be to contact surrounding landowners as part of the zoning process and make our way through the conditional use permit process. And, you know, at the end of the day, based on some feedback you receive from the community, the, the council makes, makes the decision that the juice isn't worth the squeeze, and then we go back into, into site selection and try and find out a site or sites that would solve our network issue in this location.
And Farm Bureau might have something to say at what they look at.
Who's you prefer, the chain link fence or the block wall?
I prefer the block wall because it provides greater stability to screen the equipment from a, from outside view. It's just to me, it seems to be a better, do be a better screening mechanism for the equipment site. We're going to have to do some block wall work anyway because of the, the grade of the, of the land in that location, so there will need to be at least two retaining walls that surround the site because of the surrounding grade.
I like communication, I say, what?
Sounds good. That's where the world is anyways.
Anything will help my Verizon coverage in my basement. Nothing.
I don't know if this will help your area.
Anything will help. I got it upstairs, not downstairs.
So, okay, that sounds, sounds good. Then, looks like you proceed on, and we'll see about the, if council member wants to talk to a landlord or the people that own the property below it, then we'll try to figure out who that is. I know it's for sale most of the time, and so we'll see what we can do there. Okay?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Todd. All right, then, council, we, that ends this portion of our study session, so we need to adjourn the study session and so we can go into the budget session.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and the city council study session, then we will adjourn. We will break for a few minutes while we get ready for the, the budget meeting, development meeting, so, thank you.